Good evening. I'm officially calling to order the Woburn School Committee meeting for May 28, 2020. Could we please all stand and salute the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, again. I just want to start the meeting off with a brief pause in silence for our community members or anyone that continues to suffer from the effects of the novel coronavirus. We just have a couple minutes of silence, please. Thank you. Could the Superintendent Secretary to the School Committee please call the roll?
Ms. Chisholm.
Present.
Ms. Cormier.
Here.
Here.
Lipton.
Here.
Mr. Morenne.
Present.
Dr. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Crowley.
Present. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I want to start off by saying that this is a public meeting conducted pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order dated on or about March 13, 2020. This public, this executive order allows us to conduct public meetings, video conference and technology. I want to apologize for last night. I did not know that I had a 100-person limit on the Zoom, and we did provide other access to the meeting. But tonight, we have a 500-capacity meeting for the school committee, so we will begin. And please know that if you're on the call, this is being recorded. I am going to try to livestream it. I've attempted now a couple times, and that hasn't been successful on Facebook. But please know that this is being recorded, and if you're showing your face, of course, your face will be recorded as well, and this will be available pretty immediately, right after the meeting. That being said, if the first thing on the agenda is the approval of records for 42820, any action?
Would make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Kissel.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Morenne.
In favor, yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, so that motion passes, those minutes are approved. Same thing on 50520, any action?
I didn't get, I didn't read them.
Okay, so there's an approval, is an approval of 5, May 5, 2020. Ms. Chisholm, you didn't have a chance to read them?
I think she wants to put a hold on it.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to do that. Am I not allowed?
I read them, and I sent Jean my notes, being picky, so. I will make a motion to approve, but you want to hold off?
Well, we can't, because I don't think we got the motions back, did we?
No. Okay, just hold off on those, Al. All right, thank you. We'll table those for next time, no problem. And again, Ms. McLeod, I want to thank you for your diligent work during this time. I always say I should thank Jean, and then I always forget, so I just want to thank you for keeping up with us, keeping the school committee on its toes and getting these minutes done. Thank you. Moving on to reports. Okay, could everybody mute themselves? This is like the Zoom thing. Everybody can mute themselves. I would deeply appreciate it, so we can conduct the business. So, reports and presentation of superintendent and staff. Obviously, we're here tonight to continue to address the budget for 2021. We made tremendous progress last night. We started whittling down to a budget that is passable. Again, it is the goal of the school committee to adhere to the vision and the strategic plan that the superintendent has in the school committee created in the last couple of years. But we're also up against, to the extent unknown, but also known fiscal challenges that we have. So, that being said, we are continuing to try to develop a budget with all sorts of things impeding our ability to truly do that, but we are doing our best, always focusing on the best interests of the children. So, that being said, Dr. Crowley, do you have any updates for us? We made some cuts last night, and we're going to start with our.
Sure. First of all, thank you again to the school committee. Thank you to the many people that are on the call tonight. None of this is easy. We're talking about the effect of cutting on children, and so that is a priority for all of us in the Woburn Public Schools, and I want to convey that publicly to everybody on the call. Unfortunately, as Ms. Crowley indicated, we are in a position where we have to make some difficult choices. The COVID-19 has put a damper on the state revenue at the tune of over $6 billion, and at the local level, in the millions of dollars range. So, I'm also hearing reports, the unemployment rate is at or near where it was during the Great Depression. So, the economic impact of COVID-19 is real, and we're fighting and doing everything we can to preserve and to protect the strides we've made in the Woburn Public Schools and preserve and protect jobs for all of the people that make it, so our kids receive a world-class education. So, that being said, after yesterday's meeting, or last night's meeting, we met again today. Mr. Alia, Mr. Alcanata, Ms. Sprague, Dr. Balasari, and we put together a couple lists, and I shared those with Ms. Crowley, things that were agreed to cut, and then things that you wanted us to add back in. So, as a recap, last night, we presented a budget that if the school committee had agreed to it in its entirety, would have landed at 3.4%. Fortunately, they didn't, and it gave the flexibility to add things back in. And so, when we started last night at 3.4% and started adding things back in, this morning, when we tallied it up, the additions that the committee added back in put us at 5% again. So, we have work to do, or the committee really has deliberation to undertake. And, you know, none of, again, none of this is easy. I don't envy the decisions that we have to make. We'll be happy to answer any questions that people have, the committee have, as it relates to the impact perceived on the education of the kids that we service and the families that we service. But it's a challenging time. We're doing our best, and I want to, again, thank you, the committee, Mayor Galvin, the City Council, and the community for your patience as we muddle through this whole, this whole thing. So, I think I'll stop now, Ms. Crowley, and turn it back over to you, if you want to take it from here.
Yes, okay. So, I think what we'll do is we'll share, well, we all, do we, we all received the list of the accept, the red and green list? Do we, do we all have that? Okay, so I'm going to pull that up and share it. So, here we go. All right. See it?
No, not yet.
No, okay.
Maybe you want to have Matt do it. It seemed to work last night.
Yeah, mine doesn't seem to be working. Dr. Crowley, would you mind sharing the red and green form?
Sure.
Thank you. So, just to recap, we, the school committee basically went through and cut what it would seem to be themed by non-human layoffs or any employment issue, anything that would impact someone's employment. So, we were able to whittle down about $700,000. So, we made some progress, but as Dr. Crowley indicated, we are still at a 5%. So, what I was hoping the school committee would do tonight is really get this done, really move this budget forward, because we do have a public hearing on June 1. So, I think it's time to really think about what we're going to do here. So, is it, is it up yet?
It says host disabled, screen sharing.
Okay, thank you.
Don't let me have any powers today.
All right, we're getting closer.
There we go.
Okay. It's probably going to be difficult to see.
It's actually pretty good.
Okay.
All right.
So, this is, I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Crowley for.
Yes.
The narrative, but this was, what we did this morning was take the action as from last night, accepted, obviously, where the cuts accepted, and then red, or you wanted us to add back in. So, Ms. Crowley.
Yes, okay. So, what we're looking at is what to do with the red pieces of information here. One, one framework that I thought about all day was if we did, in fact, cut the budget or reduce the budget down to, so I believe that with just the adding back in the kindergarten paras, this is just for a point of conversation, I'm not proposing anything, then we would be at approximately 3.86. What you could do with that is you could be at a 3.86 budget, and maybe you could consider some of the positions that were proposed that we could not add in, the 21 new positions, not all 21, but you could take some essential positions, and what you could do with, to, you could reduce the budget down to a number that's generally in line with our funding, and then maybe strive for a new position that was proposed that we'd never accepted. So, I, I'm just offering here solutions of how you could look at this. But I think you really need to consider the fact that freshman athletics, for instance, might not be happening. I don't know how you play soccer with six feet apart and things like that. So, some of these cuts may not be as harmful to the district as, as we think, you know, in regular time. So, I'll open it up for deliberation, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, so I had a question. The first question is, I know there's, you know, ongoing discussions with the mayor. We're still have no, you know, you're alluding, both you and the superintendent are alluding to getting to a particular level, it seems to me. Is there any more, has there been any more discussion with the mayor about the level he's expecting?
No, not, not that I, not with me.
Okay, all right. So, so my suggestion is, there was a vote of the school committee to try to reach 4%, and so, and so my recommendation is that the school committee try to meet that goal, since it was a vote of the full school committee, and so we should work on that, right?
Okay.
Can I ask what, what, where, what would we need to take off to get to 4 from 5? Do we have that number?
Yes. Ms. Crowley, can you screen share yet? Because that second thing I sent to you. Let me stop momentarily, and then.
$677,000 we have to cut.
Yes.
That was the number.
To get to, to get to 4.
To get to 4.
And we're at 5.03, so 5%. So, we have a percent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thereabouts.
Let me, so, if, if I may.
Yes, please. I'm not able to do it. I don't know why.
Try to do it again.
Thank you.
Are people seeing this now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll try to walk through this. This was what we, we came to yesterday, 3.44, and suggested, you know, to the committee. After last night, you voted $1 million back in, so that put us at 5.03. The request that was made by the school committee, as Dr. Wells just indicated, was a 4% budget, which represents this number here. The difference between what was last night and what was the 4% is a, is a difference of $677,000. That, that to say, the cuts that were added back in last night are here, totaling the $1 million. And for the edification of the committee, these, these are sort of a rank order of things that I think could be cut from the administrative level. And like, this would be the easiest thing to see cut versus this would be the hardest thing to see cut, if that makes sense.
Yes.
In other words, the kindergarten paras, I think, would be devastating to our, to our kids, our kids, you know, our five-year-olds. So, again, you know, we talked last night about people losing positions. We're doing our best to make that so. The curriculum coordinator, just to be clear, that's an administrative position, that's a cut. High school reductions, non-salary. I'm happy to say this right now, for the, for the benefit of further discussion, perhaps, but Woburn, unlike many communities, does not charge students to take the AP exam. We, in other words, the school department pays for the AP exam. Ms. Callanann explained that last year to the committee, and her, her recommendation was that students pay. So, if this cut were to be made, students would be paying for the AP exam. The AP exam in total is about $33,000. But that's, it's embedded in this number.
Can I ask what the cost is per exam?
For, in total, in some, the.
What is the cost per exam for?
I think it's $98 or right around $100 in my head. And then the other part of it is, many students, it's, if they don't, with waivers given to low income and free and reduced, so that, you know, they don't pay. But right, so, and again, these are, these are things we debated last night. And I just, I don't, I don't feel a need necessarily to reiterate all of it, but I just, that's sort of the rank ordering that we came up with. And I, I started by telling everybody, this isn't easy. There's nothing enjoyable about any of this, let me tell you. So, but that's, that's where we are.
Okay, so, thank you. So, the, basically, what the school committee could do is take 1 through 6, I'm sorry, 1 through 5, and go through them, and cut them without severe harm to the district. That's what I'm hearing. So, why don't we, why don't we start there? So, the transfer to Title 1 and non-renewal.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the $176,510 transfer to Title 1 slash non-renewals.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
On the motion, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Morenne.
Hi, I'm assuming Dr. B is on the call here somewhere. Perhaps you could explain a little bit about that again to the audience that wasn't on last night, maybe?
Oh, Dr. Crowley. Well, actually, that would mean.
I needed to, I just needed to unmute.
Okay.
So, the, the title, in the Title 1, can you all hear me?
Yes.
So, in the Title 1 grant, we do have a number of teaching positions. The non-renewal teaching positions would open up availability in the Title 1 grant, so that we would be able to transfer teachers that are currently working in the FY21 budget that we are scheduled to pay. We would be changing the funding source. Instead of using the local funds to pay the salaries, we'd be using the Title 1 funds to pay the salaries.
Thank you very much for the explanation. I'm fine, Doc. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So, I have a motion to eliminate that line item for $176,510. Any other discussion? Yeah, I just have to yell out, because I can't see everybody.
No.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lipton.
No.
Mr. Morenne.
In favor?
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes. Okay, so moving on to reducing.
I'll make a motion to reduce the substitute line by $175,000.
Okay. And all in favor of reducing that line item?
Aye.
A little motion?
Motion. I'm sorry, I'm, hey, discussion on that motion, Mr. Kissel.
Yeah, if, if we're just taking 175 up, what's the total budget for that, again?
It was 675. This puts it down at 500.
500. And again, we talked about this last night, where, you know, obviously, if we need the substitutes, they're not going to be available, because that's not in the budget, and we would, the kids would kind of gather somewhere if and when that happens, as opposed to a substitute handling the class. Is there, I mean, just for the sake of working with the numbers at all, I mean, if we have to come back to it, can we adjust that by 75 and keep 100? So, we have a lot more substitutes available. What, what, what did we end up spending? Has someone mentioned 70% of it last night?
Yeah, yes.
So, had we finished the school year out, we would have had probably 100%, or would have gone over, Joe? Joe, Alia.
Sorry, I was muted. I would say that our past track record is any indication, it probably would have gone over.
Okay, so it sounds like no matter what, it's going to go over. We're staying at 100 for four-year degrees, and 75 for. Is that right?
90 for, 90 for, for a teacher, and 70, 75 for a pariah. I don't know which. I know we had to adjust that for the minimum wage.
Correct. So, I make an amendment, if I can, on that, to.
No.
Just reduce it. What's that?
No, because that's, that's against the motion. You have to vote on the motion.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion on the reduction of the substitute line item, $175,000?
Just, Madam Chairman, just to reiterate, you know, the fact that we have the money in there doesn't mean necessarily that every classroom in the past years has been covered by a substitute. There are many factors that go into whether we have a substitute or not, and I think the administration will work the best they can. We don't know what's the fall is going to be like, whether we'll be in school and need substitutes. So, I think, you know, this time, you know, I think, you know, to get to the 4%, I think this is the cut we have to make, because it's the least and least severe of the choices we're left with.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Okay. Of course, Mr. Morenne.
Thank you. Just again, for the audience that were not available last evening, I hate to make the administration go over things again, but they mentioned last night of, you know, cutting this line item or adjusting it. The comment, I believe, for one of the superintendents, perhaps, they could reiterate, the remote learning category that we're doing through now, and perhaps the teachers would allow students to continue remote learning and somewhat alleviate the substitute burden, I guess I'm trying to get at. So, if we could, again, bother the superintendent or someone to please explain again what, what could happen with this line item going away. Thank you.
Very briefly, the thinking is, particularly at the secondary level, if everyone's obviously more comfortable on Chromebooks and remote learning, like I said last night, nothing replaces a teacher in the classroom, including a substitute. And so, if the teacher has a lesson plan ready to go on a Chromebook, the students may not necessarily need substitute at the, at the older levels.
And with that said, depending on this motion, when you say the upper levels, obviously, middle and high school, but as you indicated, Dr. Crowley, it is so very important at the elementary levels for the students to have at least a body in front of them and a person to guide them through their lessons. Thank you.
On the motion?
Yeah, Ms. Cormier.
So, I guess, kind of to piggyback on Mr. Morenne, I think, so I guess my question would be, or I guess my comment would be that we would have to, the administration would have to choose, you know, based on the situation, depending on how many subs are needed, if it can be made. I know there were questions about, you know, well, if the kids can't eat lunch at school because of social distancing, how can we put a few of the classes in the caf, for instance, with a single sub? Well, obviously, that would be, I would assume, less kids, and you would be able to social distance if that is a requirement. So, I would think that the administration would make a determination on where to put this, if it comes to a point where we are running low on this line item throughout the year, that they would choose probably the younger kids, like you say, where the older kids might not need as much oversight, and where you might be able to put a sub that you'd be able to handle more kids in a, in an area, like in the cafeteria. So, I just think that's a notable point, but I, while it's a good question, I think that, you know, making the appropriate choices would make this still safe for the, the children.
Again, just to reiterate, none of, none of this is ideal.
Right.
And we have no clue if and when we're coming back to school. So, we will do our best to keep all the kids safe and prioritize the younger kids with adults. No, no, I'm a parent of three. I, I know what, it's chaos when they're yet little.
Okay, so any more discussion on that motion, on this motion? Okay, great. So, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
No.
Mr. Lipton.
Yes.
Mr. Morenne.
No.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, that motion passes by 2.
Make a motion to reduce lunch monitors by 50%.
Can we skip that one, Dr. Wells, would you mind?
No, no problem.
Thank you.
Make a motion to eliminate freshman athletics, 77,000.
Any second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion to eliminate freshman athletics for 77,000?
On the motion?
Yes, Mr. Lipton.
Could the administration speak to, and I know we, we talked about this a little bit last night, but we didn't actually have, have a motion to speak to last night, any guidance that's coming from the state that suggests anything about what, what fall sports are going to be like, especially, so that, so that we might have an understanding of how much impact this might have?
Yeah. Briefly, on a call yesterday with Commissioner Riley, he, he's been in contact with the MIAA, the state governing body for athletics, and everyone wants to go back and play. His comment was that non-contact sports might be more likely, like golf or cross-country, where it's a little easier to social distance. There was nothing definitive about, say, soccer or, you know, field hockey or any, any sports where people cluster. But that, the conversation has been had, and it's ongoing at the state level. We're apparently two weeks away from any, any information as it relates to the opening of schools, so I assume fall sports would fall under that category as well.
And just bear with me on this one, too. What freshman, what specific freshman teams, then, would be affected? I mean, do we have a freshman golf team, for example? I would assume no.
No.
Okay. So, so primarily, we are talking about contact sports that would, that would fall under the freshman umbrella here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion or needing clarification on this motion?
Ready?
Yes, Ms. Cormier.
Just, just to confirm that, Dr. Crowley had mentioned last night that it's not that freshmen can't do sports, but they would not. but they would not have their own teams and that they could potentially participate through JV and varsity, correct?
Yep.
I swam. I didn't, I didn't do any of these type of sports that had freshman teams, so nobody cared about us. All right, just confirming. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion or needing clarification on eliminating freshman athletics? Okay, hold on. Sorry, I can't see everybody. So I think I heard Mr. Morennon's voice first, then Mrs. Chisholm? Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And again, speaking as a veteran member of the school board, in the years past, we've had Mr. Duran present to us. And here in Woburn, again, the conversation always comes up about fees and sports. Although I'm really not that much in favor of this motion or doing away with freshmen, as indicated by the superintendent, that ninth grade level of athlete may or may not be involved to get to another level. So they're not being eliminated to participate in the sport. I think we've been very generous with freshmen over the years, and again, having Mr. Duran before us, lots of other towns and communities around us even, you know, don't offer any freshmen, so it's difficult for our freshman teams to perhaps compete. So although I not really like the idea, I think with all the factors involved here with the unknowns again, and the ability of these, you know, young men and women to perhaps even as a ninth grader play up at a JV or varsity level, I think the, the cut might be unfortunate but meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any more discussion? And also, just, I don't know if this is a good time to discuss or, or open the door maybe for a further discussion on charging for athletics. That was, since we were talking about cutting a sport, then it would seem logical that the next step would be talking about how we can, if, if in fact the committee is interested in charging a user fee for athletics. So why don't we dispose of this motion and then maybe entertain a discussion on that? So any further discussion on eliminating freshman athletics?
Ellen, I have a question.
Yes, of course, Ms. Chisholm.
I just wanted to make sure that I, I spoke with Jimmy Duran and he just was going to clarify on Title IX that we would be in compliance because I know there's more girls, freshmen than boys, so I just want to make sure we're still in compliance, Title IX. But other than that, I would agree with this because he was talking to some of the sports that kids can go as a freshman and play JV or varsity, but some things like football, you wouldn't want to put a freshman kid up against a senior. So those are kind of things that he said that there would be, that would be up to coaches to weed those people out. But I just, I mean, I feel bad because I wish every kid got that ten pride right into them in the beginning, but we have to make some cuts and this seems like something we could do, hopefully, painlessly as possible. Yes, and if we're compliant, I'm good.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. That's, that's an excellent point. And just to-
Ellen.
Yeah, hold on, for the clarify that JV and varsity are still going to be available.
Right.
Just say my-
Yes, Ellen.
Ms. Kissel.
Yeah, so if we, if we did keep this in, doesn't sound like it's going to go get the vote, but if we did keep this in and there were no sports available for fall and maybe even into the winter that would involve the freshmen, what would happen with that amount of money? What, what would we be able to do with that?
Put it into the substitute line item.
Okay.
Or there may be, or there may be other aspects of the fall that we're not even aware of today that we may need to spend money on. So I think we have to be thinking of a flexible budget for the fall.
Very flexible.
Okay, and then the other, the other question is, there, there are limits on the sports teams? Is that something that the, to, to allow some of the freshmen at least to get the experience? Maybe not necessarily play, but to be part of the team and the practicing and so on? Is that something that the, the athletic director would be open to? I know they have cuts they make at, at, no, cross-country, there's no cuts, of course. So that anybody can join that beyond the, the varsity team, we'll call it. Hockey and/or football, you know, baseball, that kind of thing. Would that be, would they be open to?
Hockey, I don't think has a freshman.
They don't.
Okay.
It's basically-
Does anyone talk to, uh, yeah?
Basically football, soccer, softball, yeah, I said-
Baseball.
Softball.
And do they, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that. My kids play different sports. Are they limiting, like in the past, or is it something they might be open to?
Usually limited by the playing time, like basketball. You could have a lot of kids, but the more kids you have, the less playing time. And most of the time, you know, there's, there's five to nine kids that play most of the game.
Yeah. I understand that, but just if they were able to be on the team and be part of practice and be part of the experience, at least they're not just sitting there because-
I think, but I think that's up to the coaches.
Well, that's a math.
The coaches and the athletic, well, but I think that's outside our domain and really it should be a discussion with the athletic director and the coaches to make sure maximize the number of students that can participate.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in this, the light of the situation, I'm hoping the coaches are a little more lenient on the, the cuts. That's all. So if we are going to cut this position, this line item, that's it. Just had a couple more questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kissel, any further discussion on, on this motion? Okay, not hearing any. So roll call vote, please.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Mr. Cormier, or Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Morennon.
Yes, in favor?
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes. Okay, so that motion passes seven zero. And so I, like I said, I think it's probably a good time to have a discussion on the, on any feelings we might have about instituting a, a charge for athletics. I know in the past, there has been one. Obviously, Dr. Crowley presented a very thorough presentation on the feedback that he got from the survey and, and just, you know, the first, obviously, one side of it is that it would be school revenue that we, we could use. On the other, on the flip side, of course, it would be charging families to play sports. So I will entertain discussion on that, and I'll start with Mrs. Chisholm.
I will just say that I will not support any fees for the kids, especially in this time too. We're talking about parents losing jobs. We're talking about added expenses. We're talking about maybe they have to take time off to be with their kids in the fall when they won't be in school. I'm just not going to support anything that's going to add additional cost to a family. Sorry, that's, you know, and then we're going to go through the same, same thing that we've done in the past. Those will pay, those that won't pay. And if you talk to Mr. Duran about it, then parents pay for something and their child does not get playing time. There's going to be an awful lot of issues going on with that. So, I mean, it just doesn't seem fair if someone's going to put out three hundred dollars and their kid sits on the bench. It will not be pleasant. And then we're going to have to have somebody actually collect the money and then chase the kids. And then what do they do if they don't pay? Do we kick them off the team? What if they're the superstar? Then it's going to be, well, we're going to let him play. It, we just, it's never pretty and it's unfair, to say the least. So I would not support this.
Ms. Chisholm, Wells.
Yeah, I, I just look upon it as a silent tax and I think public schools were meant to be free. And when you add these silent taxes, you know, it goes against the nature of the public school system. So I, you know, I can't support it at this time. I think, you know, we talked about collecting the money, but I think more fundamentally, it goes against my grain about what the purpose of public schools are. And so I'm not going to, I'm not willing to entertain it at this time because it's a slippery slope. We start with this, then why don't we do, but what, where do you stop? You know, do we charge for extracurricular activities? We, you know, and it's, it's just a slippery slope and it goes against the grain of the American public school systems we're set up today.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Any other school committee member want to speak to their general feelings about charging? Yes, Kissel, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, we had the lunch increase and I was against the twenty-five cent increase, so I obviously won't be for athletic fees. And again, to echo Mrs. Chisholm, I've been saying it for a little while as well. It's just, it's a real tough situation out there for a lot of families. There are some that can afford it. They've been working. And obviously, there's an income coming, but there's an awful, awful lot of families in Hoover that, that do not have the income right now, whether it's through unemployment or otherwise, they're still struggling. So I would hesitate this year. I mean, if we have to do it in the years to come, you know, we can talk about it. But this year, I would definitely not support this.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel. Yes, it's not a motion, it's a general discussion, but-
Sorry, on the discussion.
That's okay, Ms. Cormier.
I, you know, as a, as a primary care provider, I obviously support, you know, physical activity for children, but if it comes to laying off educators versus having sports, I, it's a no-brainer to me, honestly. If, if there's an issue with, you know, whether you have a scholarship for the, for those that can't afford it or if that's a choice that they have to make in order to, you know, they're not, sports are not required. I understand wanting to play and how important it is to a lot of folks and I, I can appreciate that. But if we're talking about a budget where we're laying off teachers, I would absolutely not hesitate to cut sports first. That's it.
To be adding a fee.
Yeah, just, we're actually talking about adding a user fee.
Yeah, we weren't cutting.
Okay, well, if the next conversation then, if we have to, if it gets to that is, you know, I mean, maybe we, we pare down the sports. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'd rather charge a little bit than have to, maybe you cut something altogether. I don't know. I mean, I don't know where this, where this leads.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier. Mr. Lipsit want to?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lipsit.
I, you know, I, I'm conflicted. I hear and really appreciate Dr. Wells' statements about public education. And yeah, I mean, our, our schools should be egalitarian. Our schools should be open to all and accessible to all, no matter what. But, you know, as, as we've talked about so many times, this is, you know, our, our backs are, are up against a wall here. And if we do have, you know, robust ability to make sure that families who don't have the means necessarily to pay are able to, are able to attain a waiver, I, I agree with Mrs. Cormier. If it's a choice between charging a fee for athletics and cutting academics, I know where I'm going to come down.
Okay, so it, it does sound like the committee is in the majority in saying no. But I, what I'll do is, I'll refer it to a subcommittee. I'll refer it to finance just to see, just to study because it does seem like we're split on it. And, you know, if we, if we decide to charge for sports, we can always, you know, add to that. So I have no choice but to send it to a subcommittee because obviously we're not going to have a full vote on it tonight. So, Ms. Chisholm, would you mind taking that to finance?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so, um-
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Morennon.
Thank, thank you for recognizing my hand raised there. But again, I kind of agree with some of my colleagues here about the fees at this time. But before we get on that road, and I appreciate your opportunity to get that out there, Ms. Crowley. You know, it's kind of elephant in the room. But I believe my question's last night for anybody that was listening, and one of them's been answered already tonight, that the mayor has not given us a percentage, that he actually, a solid number that he wants. I understand what we're going for. And I don't know if anybody in conversation with the mayor since last night had the opportunity to get him the answer about his rainy day opportunities, the rainy day reserve account and the opportunities the schools may or may not have along those lines. And I have a couple of things to add, unless the superintendents want to answer those two theories right now. Any, anyone?
Does anyone want to answer whether or not we have a response from the mayor regarding a rainy day fund for the school district?
I would say that at this time, Mayor Galvin has, has not indicated. I think there's so many unknowns in the city, so he, he's not willing to commit directly to school. I mean, he, they're faced with the same variables we are. So I, I want to say there's not a commitment, but you know, there-
Okay. I would just, if I may, Madam Chair, to the administration and to yourself, you know, it's, it's, doesn't hurt to ask, as they say. Anybody that has children knows that. And going down my list of other concerns tonight before we move forward with some of these obligations we're going to have, perhaps Joe Alia could answer a few of these if he's available. If not, any ballpark figure, maybe Joe? Any savings that we've already left behind in the conference since the school closed? Kind of a ballpark figure on that, Joe. And coming up expenditures that may, again, may or may not exist this summer, will be our summer school programs, general summer school program, along with the Sped Summer Camp over at the Shemrock. If they're going to be in existence to what extent and how much is that in the books for us as we sit? Thank you.
Well, right now, the Sped Summer School is budgeted for about a hundred and forty thousand. I know that Maureen, and maybe Mike can chime in. Not that familiar with it, but I know she was looking to see if it could be, if it's going to be done virtually or has to be done in the schools. Right now, in any of our summer programs, we have no intention of opening up our schools for any type of summer program. We've told the YMCA that their programs won't be run this summer. And any saving, now, all of that expense after July one falls on next year's budget. And as I said, the Sped Summer School is fully budgeted for, for next year. Any savings this year, obviously, it's, it's a moving target right now because we are still getting invoices and still paying tuitions, out-of-district tuitions and some of our, some other bills that are coming in right now. But we're still hopefully on track for around two and a half to, to million in savings. There has been no commitment. There's been this talk with the mayor as to if any of that money could come back to the school department in the form of maybe capital for Chromebooks and things like that. And we don't have a definitive answer on that.
Okay.
I have some other information as well. I'm Mr. Morennon.
Hi, thanks for Mr. B, that, Dr. B, go ahead.
As of right now, the department has not issued a final ruling on whether ESY will be remote or in the schools. However, you know, they have told us to plan for both. We are leaning towards it being remote. It is likely that if we are remote, that attendance will not be as high as it would be if we were doing ESY onsite. And that's just a matter of, you know, hot summer days, children sitting at home in front of laptops while their siblings play and other factors. We also don't know what we would need with regard to devices. So even if it's remote, we still have other new expenses. And we believe that the amount that we have budgeted is, is the appropriate amount. We will be running some other small summer programs for students in the EL program who were concerned about their learning loss because when they're at home in a family that doesn't speak English, they've returned to speaking their native language and not having as many opportunities to speak English. So we're concerned that some of the language skills that they've made throughout the year could be diminished. So we will be using Title III funds, nothing from the local budget, to fund some booster programming in the summer for our EL students.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Mike. Dr. B, one more thing, Joe. Utilities, and I know early in this endeavor here, I think yourself and Mr. Dunkley indicated they went around and kind of unplugged stuff to see if we can save savings there. And obviously, lights aren't on, things aren't running. Do we have an estimate of what we'll save? I know you gave a ballpark figure.
I haven't, I have not seen that estimate for Mr. Dunkley. I know that what we did in, what Dave, what Dave has given me for next year's budget is there are solar panels on some schools. They've not been connected up yet. We're trying to get the, the utilities companies, you know, to, to work on that so that we can, so that those panels can start to generate some savings to us. We did plug some savings in the budget next year for that to happen.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Again, you know, we've kind of explored every little option we can get here. And, you know, in the case that some of these ideas come back to the mayor and perhaps, you know, by us saving those dollars and cents, wherever they have to go, we can do some maneuvering to get them to come our way perhaps. I appreciate the explanation on that and the clarification on my comments. So I'll be hanging on for our next endeavor, our next step.
Madam Chair?
So just another piece- So just another piece of information is that there were savings from the school district when schools did in fact close, but that too remains an unknown because there are unfinished business or business up in the air regarding that. Um, but we do anticipate that there will be a savings. Um, and that is, that is, could be a potential, um, silver lining. Uh, but it does go back to the general fund, meaning it does go back to the city. Um, but perhaps in a calculation to, uh, fund the schools, that would be taken into consideration from the city, particularly for one-time capital plans or Chromebooks or something that is just a, a one-time thing versus an ongoing expense. Um, okay, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kissel.
I have a question. I just, and I don't know if anyone's following it, if Joe or, or one of the others, the superintendents is doing the numbers. Based on what we've cut so far from the new reconsideration, uh, is anyone having? I have four point four. I don't know if anyone else has come up with a number.
Yeah, we know, we're around four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I did the percentage on page two.
Yeah.
Added that up.
We have to get to, yeah, so we have to get to six seventy-seven, four oh seven.
No, I understand, but I'm saying right now, if someone else is smarter than me can tell, tell me if I'm at four point four or we're got a different number. We're just minusing out the percent increases from the things we, uh, we just knocked off. From five point oh three.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, yes, Mr. Kissel, at this moment, we are at four point three seven percent.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of follow it live instead of wait until the end and then say, oh, we're at three point six and then we got to go back in. I'm just trying to see, because the rest of the stuff, according to the list, well, they said the rest of it, it was in, uh, listing by, by most need, I guess, down to the pairs at the bottom. So we're at four point three seven right now.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Okay, folks, we are at four point three seven. Um, any further action? I'm seeing high school reductions, non-salary.
Can we stop now?
I'll make a motion to reduce high school reductions, non-salary by ninety-six, eight, sixty-one.
And I will add that this would include, um, charging for A P exams. Um, right now, we, we pay for the A P exams where, um, just objectively speaking, um, I know Mrs. Chisholm is just going to speak on this. We are one of the only.
To make it easier, I'll, I'll amend my motion and take out thirty thousand. I think that was the cost, the cost.
Okay.
For the A P exams.
Okay.
I would, I would say it's closer to thirty-five thousand, Dr. Wells.
Thirty-five thousand then.
Take out thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So that's about a third?
Yeah. Bob, could you just give us the number for that? We take out the thirty-five?
Sixty-one.
About sixty-one, sixty-one, something, sixty-one, eight, six, one? Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Point one four two.
So I'll make a motion to reduce it by sixty-one, eight, six, one.
Second.
Okay, so, just so the, the public understands what just happened there. So, um, there was a motion to reduce, uh, the high school budget, um, and not charge for A P exams. So that the thirty-five thousand dollars that we, we have to pay for A P exams will stay in and the number is now sixty-one thousand that will be reducing the budget by. Okay. So, and I have a second on that motion. Any discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Malrennen.
Thank you for, uh, that. Again, you know, for the people that weren't able to get in last night, I know we had Ms. Callanan on, uh, great graduation plan moving forward for the seniors. Hopefully that stays intact. If someone could just refresh the audience again, what she was talking about there besides the A P exam, what actually will be taken away from that i- item, please? I understand A P staying, no cost to the students, but what else was in her mindset on that line item, please?
Ms. Prigg.
If anybody remembers.
Are you talking about the, are we still on the non-salary for the high school?
Yes.
She has about fifteen to twenty different accounts in her budget line items. Um, I guess, uh, a large portion would come out of her office supplies. There were, um, other small accounts, so there were a number of them. I can put a summary together and have it for everybody by Monday, by, by the weekend.
No, that's fine. I don't, Ms. Prigg, anything to add to that? I just.
I, I believe the proctors were there, but in a conversation with Ms. Callanan earlier today, we talked about other ways that we could proctor those exams without paying proctors to, to be present for them.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Again, as the chairperson indicated, this is just getting back to the A P. The kids will not be paying for them as in the past, women kids will be allowed to take those at no cost. So that's the, uh, intention of the motion, so I appreciate the clarification and also the, uh, explanation for the audience members that weren't available last evening. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier. Yes, Mr. Kissel.
I'd like to make a motion. We keep the remaining items on, in the budget. I believe it's around.
Mr. Kissel, if you wouldn't mind, I want to dispose of the motion on the floor first.
Okay.
I really appreciate your, your motion, um, but I think we should dispose of this one first. So I have a motion to reduce the, uh, high school non-salary by sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one. Uh, roll call vote, unless Mr. Lipsit and Ms. Cormier want to speak on this? No, okay.
Sorry, I, I, yeah, I just, can I just get a little more clarification? That's okay. Uh, clarification on what exactly is in this sixty-one thousand dollars? I don't know if I just blanked on that, if it was just discussed.
We'll have a list.
I'm going to put a summary together because there are a number of accounts that impacts.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Lipsit, can't see you, so.
I'm all set.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, roll call vote, please.
Matt Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
So can I get what, what we are saying, we're going to re-
We're cutting sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Okay, um, no.
Uh, Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
No.
Mr. Malrennen.
Yes, in favor.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes. That motion passes five-two. Okay, so, yes, Mr. Kissel.
Yeah, I want to make a motion that, uh, the remaining items, which have obviously been, been indicated by administration and, uh, many, many emails and things we've received, uh, probably in the last day or so, uh, be kept on the budget and if someone can come up with a number based on the sixty thousand we're cutting on that last line item and keeping thirty-three or thirty-five, whatever it was. If I've got it right, it's around four point three.
We're a hundred and eighty-seven thousand short.
Madam Chair. Yeah, Madam Chair, we would be at four point two eight four percent.
Okay, so I make a motion. We keep the remaining items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, that, that motion's on the floor. Discussion of the motion is, um, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, um, you know, the administration did rank the things and, you know, and you can see the lunch monitors by fifty percent is, is higher on their ranking to, to, to lead than some of the other items. And we just, you know, as a courtesy, we skipped over that one. So I, you know, it seems to me, you know, if we're going to keep all these other things, why are we keeping one where the administration feels that would be less impactful than some of the other ones?
I think we skipped over it because I, I can't preside over it.
I know, I know why we skipped over it.
Right, okay.
That's what my point is, is, my point is, is that maybe we should take action on that one.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, up to the committee.
I withdraw my motion for now.
Okay, so, Ms., Mr. Kissel, I think intended to be at six, seven, and eight. And so do I have action on, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Malrennen, can you preside over what I think is going to be a motion on number three?
So I'll make a motion.
Yes, I will, Madam. Uh, yeah, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll entertain that.
I'll make a motion to reduce lunch monitors by fifty percent, seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-two.
Okay, Dr. Wells' motion. Is there a second on that for the lunch monitors as Dr. Wells presented? No second.
I'll second it.
Uh, that was Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Wells' motion has been seconded by Mr. Chisholm. Any further discussion on the motion to reduce fifty percent for the lunch monitors currently? Oh, no further discussion?
On the last one.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't say, I don't have a screen to see who's raising their hands, so just.
That's all right.
Shout out, uh, Dr., Mr. Lipsit.
Uh, I mean, I, I, again, I appreciate all of the, the work that the administration's done to rank these and I understand that lunch monitors, um, you know, if, if we're comparing to kindergarten pairs or a Sped psychologist, um, are going to fall down that list. But to me, again, without certainty on a number that we're trying to reach, and I know, you know, we agreed to go to four percent, but that's a number that came essentially solely from us. Um, and with the, with the deep uncertainty about what things are going to look like next year, I, I can't vote, I can't in good conscience vote to, to take away people's jobs, especially not people who serve the, the function that lunch monitors do.
Thank you for that, uh, Mr. Lipsit. Anybody else on Dr. Wells' motion regarding the fifty percent reduction in lunch monitors at this time? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Crowley.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
No.
Mr. Kissel.
No.
Mr. Lipsit.
No.
Malrennen.
No. Dr. Wells.
Yes.
And, well, that motion fails on two, three, four to two and we'll entertain, uh, we'll pass it on to Ms. Crowley when she returns. Ms. Crowley, you may return. There was a motion and we can, uh, by Dr. Wells, it failed for the half reduction on lunch tool monitors. Ms. Crowley, you back?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Wells, Ms. Crowley, you're back. Thank you.
I'm back. Thank you. Mr. Kissel.
Yeah, I make a motion that we keep the remaining six, seven, and eight, which would be the next on our, our talks, I believe, and obviously the, the lunch monitors that voted, uh, got voted down as well, um, so not removed. Um, and keep it at the, I think we'll be at a number of four point two eight something at that point. So that would be my motion to keep the remaining items that we have not voted off.
Okay, so we have a motion to, I guess, add back in six, seven, and eight, the budget work.
Three, six.
Publish the budget with these positions funded. Okay, any second, uh, any? Yes, Mr., Dr. Wells.
Yeah, uh, to the chair, to the administration, were you able to come up with the numbers for the previous few years, what we've gotten for budget increases? I've sent an email. I don't know if you had time to do it, Joe or?
I, I think Joe, Joe handed me something that's on my desk.
Yeah, John, I have a, I have a sheet, uh, your thing said two thousand and seven.
The reason I picked that was because that was the year, you know, the, we had the last financial crisis. So I was just trying to get.
I have a spreadsheet that I will send the committee tomorrow that goes back fifteen years.
But I, but I was just hoping tonight to give some perspective on where, you know, what past budgets have been for percentage-wise versus what we're asking tonight. And I think you'll find that, you know, you know, I don't, I don't have the, all the numbers here, but I think you'll find a, a budget of four percent is, you know, bigger than a lot of percentages we had over the years.
Give me a minute, John, I'll find the sheet.
So I just, I just trying to put it in context of the situation we're, we're in right now and I just want the rest of the committee to have that perspective.
But we're also in a perspective.
Do you know your binders right there from the last fifteen years?
No, I don't, sorry, yeah. But anyway.
Joe was young man fifteen years ago.
Yeah, and I understand, you know, nobody wants to do cuts, but we have to, you know, we're advocating for our students, we're advocating for the school system, but we're advocating in light of the situation the city's in. And I think we, I just want to keep that perspective, so.
If I can add one piece, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kissel.
I, you know, everyone keeps talking about the, the, and I, I'm part of it. I own a business here in Woburn. I, I understand my, you know, whatever thing. I totally understand the city's side, but we also have to put in perspective what the school system is going through and what we need. And, you know, we've got a psychologist there, we've got the paraprofessionals we've all talked about. There's nothing that I can see left that, that would make sense to cut. That's my opinion. That's why I made the motion. But having said that, you know, we talked about the city and what it's going to go through with the finances. The school department at this point is going through quite a bit too. And the kids coming back that were part of the city are coming back to a school system that we want to make sure is a hundred percent ready to go, uh, if and when we even start in September. But we don't want to, I, I don't want to cut things that are going to make a huge difference to these kids that haven't had school since March and they come back into a, a system that is missing paraprofessionals, which doesn't sound like that's getting voted out, but we're four point two eight. What's that?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I left it on my desk.
Yeah, don't worry about it. Thank you. Sorry, Chris.
I'll send it out.
No, so I mean, we're four point two eight. We weren't given a full direction on where to go. So my, and I think Ellen has said this many years, you know, as, as a member and as chair, we, we present it. If we have to go back and, and cut a couple of more items that, that are there, maybe by then we'll have some more direction from the state. Maybe we'll have more direction on athletics. Maybe we'll have more direction on a lot of things that we don't have right tonight. That's just my, my, my take on it. I'd love to make a motion that we just take the rest. We send it over. We have a six-one meeting with the public. See what the council says. If they come back and say we're going to give you three and a half, a half percent, then it's on them. We now have to go back and make, make those tougher cuts. But maybe they'll surprise us and help us out because they know the school system's, you know, in tough shape with a lot of things going on in this, in the system. So let's just, let's just make.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kissel, have you made a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
It was seconded.
Okay. Also on that motion?
Yes, Mr. Kissel.
I, and, and this is, this may be a procedural question. I don't know whether this would fit under, under a potential amendment or a secondary motion after this one. Um, but I do feel the need to bring up that there is a cut that has been discussed that is not on this list and, and one that I think we do need to consider. Um, if we're talking about cuts that are not going to have a direct impact on our students, I think we do need to talk about, about school committee stipends.
What, about what?
I think, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you. I just want to make sure I got it right.
I said, I think we need to talk about school committee stipends.
Oh, okay.
Um, and whether or not those are something that we can use to reduce line item. Um, I, my understanding was we were talking about nearly sixty thousand dollars and I also understand that that includes our, our school committee representative from Northeast Metropolitan and, and I know that that's, um, not something that, that I would feel comfortable voting on to, to, to take away that member's stipends, um, but I think we should have a conversation about whether or not we can reduce, uh, or, or nearly eliminate our own stipends for the year, uh, given that we do need to make this up and given that they are not going to have a direct impact on students.
Thank you, Ms. Lipsit. I, I think that's probably appropriate for a, a additional, um, if there's a motion for additional discussion.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Well, I'll wait until this motion is, is done and then I will proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Lipsit. So, um, you know, it's only because I'll, I'll get confused. So we have a motion to really, um, go as is with what we've cut tonight. So any further discussion on that?
Ellen, I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Chisholm.
If we keep the curriculum coordinator and it will not be to sixty thousand dollars, it would be to ninety-five, so we'll have to add in another thirty-five thousand dollars. So we cannot get a curriculum coordinator for sixty thousand dollars. That was only the difference between, um, Mrs. Gavington going back into the classroom. So that is ninety-five thousand, not sixty.
And, and just additional piece of information, that was a cut to, um, administration. There was some, I don't, I don't remember where it was, but there was some commentary that administration or management, um, hasn't been touched by this budget when in fact the eliminating the curriculum coordinator is directly in central office. And I think that was a way, um, of course.
But we, but we didn't do it.
Right, well, it was, it was proposed by the administration. And I think that was, that was a way of, of evening things out, being more equitable in, in, um, the administration's proposals.
And, and I, and I'm happy for that because everybody's getting ahead and, and if they talked as a team and they thought they could do this and Wendy spoke about this last night and said that they had already made arrangements for this. So I mean, if we're going to keep that, we need to add in ninety-five thousand, not sixty, is what I'm saying. So we're going to be knocked by more.
Okay, well, we'll see where this motion goes and maybe Ms. Chisholm will make an additional motion.
Well, we want to be accurate, that's what we have to do.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Any further discussion on Mr. Kissel's motion?
Do we have a clarification from the administration about that?
Dr. Crowley?
Yeah. Because we should make it what the real amount is. If, if it's really ninety-five, then we should take that into account.
If I, if I may, um, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, when we were trying, we were moving, um, the position into a vacant position at one of the other schools. That vacant position. That vacant position was at a master's two level, the additional amount on top of the master's two that would be eliminated from the budget was the difference in the current curriculum coordinator's salary going back to his, on the teacher's salary table where he would be normally, so there was the salary for the master's two that we had budgeted, the vacant position, that goes away, plus the additional stipend that the curriculum coordinator got over and above his teacher's salary, the salary off of the teacher's payroll, salary table, so that's where you come up with the 6318. If you add the position back, the curriculum coordinator's position back, the position itself, where it's, where it's like a, a more higher-powered position, so to speak, for lack of a better term, that position's going to come in at around 95,000.
And if I may just amplify Joe's comments, in column D, you'll see that we added the $95,000 back to come to a million 47, and then we carried that over under column G, so you see the million 47, so the, the $34,862 roughly has already been added into this budget, so we have accounted for that, I won't call it discrepancy, we have accounted for that accounting transaction that Joe actually just explained, so the number you see there is accurate.
Okay, so if we, if we take action, that's what the amount would be? Yeah, if we.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's up to you, Dr. Wells, if you wanted to endorse it, I don't know that another motion needs to be made, we've already accounted for that extra 34,000.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I have.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Malrennen. Thank you, Madam Chair, just, Mr. Kissel's comments, I believe they're right on, we, we weren't given a number by the mayor's office, I understand the situation, but the state of the city, the state of the Commonwealth, the state of the country, so we have to move forward sooner or later, we want to keep the best interests of our students and staff in mind, it's a number, it's, it's, you know, not too crazy a number, I think, yes, we voted for four, we don't have an accurate number, so many unknowns, we don't know about the savings being transferred back over to us, we're not sure, you know, solar panel money coming back over to us, we're not assessing fees, we're not charging kids for exams, so I think to move forward this budget, make it public, send it down to wherever it has to go publicly, present it to the mayor and the city council, and see where that takes us, you know, we might hear something different as Ms. County did about everything a week from now, two weeks from now, whether it's at a state level, the DESI people, the MIAA people, there's so many unknowns, so I think a step in this direction will be all right at this juncture in the evening, so those are my comments regarding Mr. Kissel's motion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malrennen, Mrs. Chisholm, you want to be heard again?
Well, I just didn't understand why we would have had that money in there if we were making that cut, I don't understand why that would have been in there, is that basically would have been?
They tried to, I think they tried to deal with it last night, and so they were just trying to make the books balance, so to speak, and, you know, so, you know, they were.
I'm not trying to understand the question.
The committee.
Well, no, I just didn't know if the whole thing wasn't taken out prior, so.
For the curriculum coordinator?
Yeah.
No, it was taken out, but he was transferred to a vacant position, the vacant position that was budgeted, which is the master.
No, I understand now, but I was thinking, yeah, that 60,000 was going to be enough to hire a new curriculum coordinator, because they're like 95,000, so that's why, but if there's 34 already sitting there waiting for it, I didn't know why that was there, unless you made that adjustment today.
We made that adjustment today.
Okay, all right, all right, then I'm good.
Okay, further discussion on the motion, Mr. Lipsit, Mrs. Cormier, Ms. Cormier?
Sorry, if Ms. Cormier has something else.
No, sir.
I just want, I mean, all I want to do is echo what Mr. Malrennen said, I mean, what, what concerns me is that our 4% number is something that we advanced, it isn't something that we have been given as a benchmark, and I understand that it's, you know, we're using historical benchmarks here, but we are, I mean, we were at a critical year, you know, as, as we can see, the struggle just to get down to 4% is, is potentially damaging to our school system, and, you know, we don't necessarily like to phrase it this way, but we are in a negotiation over what this budget is going to be, and one of the chief rules of negotiation is don't negotiate against yourself, and that's to a degree what we're doing, I think our, our job is to get this budget to a point where we are doing the best to both meet our financial, you know, our fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers, and do the best for our students, and I think that this is essentially where we are right now, we, I think, have largely agreed that what remains of this budget is not something that we can, that we can deal with cutting, that it's going to be too harmful for our students, too harmful for our schools, and so, yeah, I'm particularly happy advancing this budget, and if they come back and say that this is not acceptable, then, then we'll deal with that when we can, but what we're saying with this budget is, this is the minimum that we need to do right by our kids, and, and, you know, if that causes an additional cycle, so be it for me.
Need more discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Chairperson?
Yes.
I agree with Mr. Lipsit, I mean, there are so many unknowns right now, we don't know what our number's going to be, we don't know what September's going to look like, we don't know if kids are going to be eaten in the cafeteria next year, so I think that all of what we've done so far, some people say we're just spinning our rails, but I think it's absolutely been productive and helpful at this point, and if, like Mr. Lipsit said, if we have to come back, we have to come back, but I think that this is what we can work with, and if we have to do something more, I think we should deal with that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, any further discussion? I just want to state one thing without arguing on the motion, there are other positions that the administration desperately wants, such as a assistant principal of the Goodyear and a special ed coordinator for the elementary school, and yet, the committee is choosing to fund a position that they have told us that they don't need anymore, so I'm just putting that out there, that there are, there's desperate desperation for these other.
Arguing the motion, Madam Chair, if you want to speak, I think you have to give up the chair.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Wells, okay, roll call vote. Yeah.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Malrennen.
In favor, yes.
Dr. Wells.
No.
Ms. Crowley.
No, that motion passes five to two, Mr. Malrennen, I'm going to pass the chair to you so I can make a motion, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll retain the chairmanship at this time for Ms. Crowley to make a motion, Ms. Crowley, recognize, Ms. Crowley?
Thank you, I'd like to eliminate the curriculum coordinator position for the purpose of funding the special education coordinator for the elementary school, I think that this district is in dire need of developing an infrastructure for special education program development, I have had numerous talks, and I have been to the SSA meetings, and I do believe that this position is essential to the district, and I do believe that the curriculum coordinator position is not. Motion to that effect.
Just a matter of.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Well, it's not clear to me that, Mr. Chairman, it's not clear to me that motion's allowed, because the committee just voted to retain all those three positions, I think it has to be, the motion would have to be to add that position separately.
Right.
Independent of those three, I think that it, that's just as a matter of rules, because.
Thank you, thank you, I'm rusty, I will withdraw the motion, and I will make a new motion to add the position of elementary, elementary special education coordinator that was originally composed to us, and we did not place in the budget, and I'll wait for a second.
A second. What's the dollar amount for that?
Just on the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Crowley, seconded by Mr. Lipsit, on the motion.
This mo, this position is essential, our special education director is a one-woman band, and there is, there's very little infrastructure to, to basically develop programs and to serve children in our, in district programs, I think the position is essential to really invest in special education, particularly for our, you know, most vulnerable children, and I think that position should be added in.
Can I be heard, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dr. Crowley, please, Dr. Crowley, thank you, I can't see anybody's hands raising, sorry, Dr. Crowley, please.
I, I can't thank Ms. Crowley enough for her passion for this position, we put it into that budget that was at 3.4%, there was the EBA, the two nurses, and this position that you referenced.
Oh, it is in the budget?
Yes.
I win, okay.
Why, do you want to?
Well, here I am, I'm underlying the importance that this position remain in the budget.
I appreciate.
Thank you.
Do you want to, uh, remove the motion, Madam Chair?
Withdraw my motion.
Withdraw the motion from Ms. Crowley, a second withdrawn, and.
Please take over the.
It's just another day in Cringeville for Ellen Crowley, okay.
Another day in Cringeville, okay, Ms. Crowley, you're back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, okay.
I shouldn't have let you go with your original motion, we could have cut more out of the budget.
All right, so we have completed our budget.
I would, there's one more motion that I would like to offer.
Yes, Mr. Lipsit.
I would like to make a motion that the school committee agree to reduce our stipends, I will, I'll, I'll make the motion to reduce the stipends, and we can adjust that as we discuss, for the, for the 2020, 2021 school year, excluding that stipend for the, for the representative from Northeast Metro Tech, and excluding the additional funds, the additional stipend for the chair.
Point of order, Ms. Chairman, Madam Chairman, it's not clear to me that that motion's allowed, because the salary is stipulated by the city council, just like we can't raise our salary, it's not clear to me that we can cut it, now, I would suggest if members want to do, and I know members in the past have donated their salary to various, you know, I know one former member set up a scholarship fund and so forth, so I think that's allowed, members can donate their salary back to the school system, but I'm not, it's not clear to me that it's allowed, that we can alter our salary, because we don't control our salary.
And we, can we make a request of city council to do this for us?
That, that's the, that may be the possibility, but I don't think we can do it ourselves.
Okay, then I will withdraw my earlier motion and make a new motion that we offer a request to City Hall that if we need, if they require additional funds to be taken out of our budget, that the first thing to be cut be the school committee's stipends.
I have a second.
So I'm just trying to clarify how this is going to be done, if, there's no guarantee, it seems to me, that we get the money if we do it.
Well, we've already, we've already voted to advance this budget, so I think we're advancing this budget.
No, but I'm talking about your motion, I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of it, because it seems like the council could vote, and the school system would never see that money, they could eliminate our salary based on your, you know, our recommendation to them, but there's no clear implication that they would have to give that money to the school system.
I see your point, I mean, you know, I.
I think it, you know, it's, you know, what I would suggest is maybe the chair, you know, and work, if this, you want to advance this, is work with the city council president to see if something can be done, but I just don't want to give up money and not have it go to the school system, just go to the city coffers, so to speak, so maybe there could be some more investigation, because as, if, as we think it might be, we'll come in back with it, maybe there can be, the details could be worked out while we're in the interim.
Okay, so then I will withdraw the second motion, and add a third motion that empowers the chair of the school committee to enter into discussions with the city council president to work out mechanics so that should the city council determine that we have too much in our budget, that the school committee's stipends be reduced, eliminated to, to the degree that they can be, retaining a dollar, and added back into our school budget.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion?
I was getting paid for this, so, worse for me.
And, you know, I mean, I'm fully aware this, this might not win me any additional friends on the school committee, hopefully I'm not taking it, I mean, nobody, nobody can go on vacation anyway, so here we are, but, you know, to me, if we're going to be asking our schools, our teachers, our students to sacrifice, we need to be willing to do it too, I didn't, I don't think any of us ran for this position for the money, and, you know, if it's a question of cutting things that, that are going to benefit our students, and, or, you know, me getting an extra couple thousand dollars, again, my choice, my vote is going to be with students, and so, you know, I realize this is a lot to ask, I realize this is a, you know, this isn't, this is a personal vote, I realize that, that in some cases it might be a difficult vote, but I do think it's something that we, you know, if, if we're going to be sitting here and asking people to sacrifice for our schools, we have to be willing to do it too.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion?
That's an ordinance, we can't change it, so it would have to become from the city council, and they would have to make that recommendation to us.
Yep.
And at this time, when everybody's hurting, you don't know, some of us might be too, and anybody at any time, we've had past, like John had said, school committee members that have donated their salary directly to the school department, so if you feel free to do that, that would be great, you could do that at any time, any members that would want to do that, and go directly to the schools, some of them have done it scholarship, some of them done directly to a certain, even to a sports team, but that's something you can do, but it's an ordinance, and it's not anything that we can really do.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm.
But that's, but you got a second, so you can do a roll call.
Okay, any further discussion on that? I will say that I donate my, primarily, donate my salary.
You can do all the things, but don't make it in public, people do it all the time.
Yeah, okay, so, roll call vote.
On the motion, just, on the other thing, you know, people might, you know, and again, again, it's not a personal thing, people can decide, if they donate, they get a tax deduction, if you cut your salary, you don't get any, you know, tax deduction, so there's advantages to that, too.
Thank you, Dr. Wells, okay, so the motion's on the floor, let's have a roll call vote.
Ms. Chisholm.
No.
Mr. Cormier. Ms. Cormier, sorry.
Ms. Cormier says yes.
My apologies.
I'm sorry, I'm not very feminine today, I don't know.
Mr. Kissel.
No.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Ms. Malrennen.
No.
Dr. Wells?
No.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, okay, that motion fails, four to three.
Nice music.
Megan.
Megan Chapman, what are you listening to?
All right, let's not recognize people that are, okay, so, we have a budget, why don't we, why don't we make a motion to officially advance this budget to a public hearing?
So, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion, oh, I have actually a question before we do that, and I know there's a motion on the floor, but is the, the CARES Act money, this is just a, just an informational question, is there any potential that CARES Act money on the city side could be used to fund social emotional supports for children in the school district? If we, if we could advocate for that, could be used for that?
We'll do our best to advocate, you know, it's, it's hard to predict what the needs will be on the city. You know, it's, it's hard to predict what the needs will be on the city side as well. We, as we described last night, we've allocated our CARES segment to the special ed consulting line. Other than that, I, I can't, I can't speak for the city.
No, I was just, I, I guess my, my question was, could it be, could it potentially be used for that purpose? Not will it or shall it, or, or making any conjecture about the city use of it? Can it be used for that? For instance, what I'm thinking about was the potential social worker at the Malcolm White, for instance, that we can't fund. Just wondering if there could be a potential, if, if that position would help kids kind of reintegrate into the school district? If, if that could be a potential source of funding? I just need to know that.
I, I mean, it's a conversation that, that we can have with the city. You know, again, the, the city's needs are there too.
Yeah, right.
I, I, I do think that overall that the CARES Act does provide flexibility to municipalities to some extent, to a, a much different extent than usually when you, when you get a grant, it's usually very specific. But again, the city side would have to determine and, and understand the need. I, you mentioned the Malcolm White, you know, Goodyear needs support, like a, a lot of our schools need support. So I, I also, you know, candidly, I, I'm always afraid to speak on behalf of the city, but I respect Mayor Galvin. And one of the things that he is reluctant to do often is to create a recurring expense.
Ranging expense.
You know, if, not within the operational budget.
Right, of course, that makes sense. I'm just wondering if the, even though we're about to advance this budget or, or at least have a motion on that, just wondering if the committee would, I don't know how to do it. If, if we could leave the door open for more exploration of CARES Act funding, particularly for mental health services and social emotional supports? Guess it's just more of a statement. I, I think that's what the committee should do. So, okay, back to the motion. Oh, Mrs. Chisholm.
But I can just get clarification. I mean, it's not by, by Monday. How many new positions we've added this year? Since we didn't eliminate two that we thought we were going to do, just for, we have the total number of employees we're adding to this budget.
Four. Four.
Four.
Four new ones?
Two nurses, a BCAA, and a special ed coordinator.
No, but and a curriculum coordinator.
No, but that was, that's, that was an existing position. You asked for new positions.
Well.
Do you mean how many new people we're hiring or how many new positions we're adding?
New positions we're hiring.
Okay.
So it's four new people.
That would be four, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And Mrs. Chisholm, any, Dr. Wells?
Nope.
Nope.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, I think we're ready. This is a monument of hope.
We have the final figures? We need all the, we need the numbers.
We need the number.
Yes, I have.
Do we leave for the public hearing? I mean, do we, do we do it? We don't need it now, we need it for the public hearing, is that right? No, we need it now.
No.
We need to advance a certain dollar.
Got it.
Yep, I have that, Madam Chair. FY21 budget would be 68,565,726. That's 68,565,726.
Okay, so in clarification, we have a motion on the floor to approve the amount as stated by Mr. Alcanada.
What was the percentage? Did we get the final one, 4.228 or something?
Yes, it's 4.284.
284, okay.
Yeah, if you run it to three digits, it's 4.284.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so the school committee is officially advancing to public hearing. A vote to increase the school budget by 4.284% at 68,565,720? Did I get that right?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Seven twenty-six is the last three digits.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Miss Chisholm?
Yeah.
Miss Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Malrennen?
Yes, in favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes. Great work.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Malrennen.
At this moment, I, I probably, we miss myself here. If we don't recognize, I think, the audience tonight, according to what I see here, raised 239 participants on the screen, apparently. So again, we have to really thank the public for their enthusiasm and interest in what we've just accomplished over the last couple of evenings and what the administration has gone through to get to where we're at today. Again, keeping the best of mind of our students and staff in the building. So I just want to make sure that tonight, A, thank you, Ms. Crowley, for arranging excess limit of more than 100 people. And hopefully, people will be satisfied with what we've accomplished. So I wanted to make that message and get that message to the public again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malrennen. I, I just want to say I'm, I'm thrilled that we have advanced a budget to public hearing that both supports the school district and yet takes into consideration the fiscal realities of the city. I think it's, it was well-balanced approach. I can't thank enough Mr. Alcanada, Mr. Alea, obviously Dr. Crowley, Dr. Balasari, Ms. Sprague, and the entire leadership team for the massive amounts of work that you created in an 8.4 budget. You reduced it to 5.9, you reduced it to five, you reduced it to four, back up to five. And now we're at 4.28. I can't be more proud of the district. This district has gone through so much in the past 10 weeks to reinventing the concept of suburban public education, to trying to pass a budget when it's like we're in the movie Bird Box. And I, I can't be happy enough or more proud of this community. I absolutely expect that the city will support this budget to the extent that can. We have weekly meetings with the mayor where he is, he understands exactly what's happening in the education system. And I have full, I have full confidence that this will be a successful endeavor. I thank my colleagues and all of the people that supported us along the way. So, moving on. So we have correspondence. Oh, God. We have many different forms of correspondence, mostly people reaching out to us.
Chairman, I make a motion that they be added to the permanent record.
Yes. Okay, I, I actually don't have them available. So this is what we'll do. The public hearing, we will read all of the letters and correspondence from people that have emailed us about the budget. And the school committee at the public hearing will set aside enough time for everybody to speak on the budget. Either we will do it by recognizing people on Zoom or they will directly chat me and I will call them. But we will have public comments and it will be an ample amount of time, but not hours and hours, just so everybody can be heard. At that point, I will read the.
Madam Chairman, if we add it to the permanent record, I don't think it's necessary that you read them as long as they're distributed to all the committee.
I understand, but I, just for the public hearing, I think I'll just mention the names of people that reached out to us, that's all.
That, that's fine, but I would not.
Read the whole letter.
Start reading, you know, that.
Got it. Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. I meant, all right. So that's how the public hearing is going to go. I, I will set up a, a way to do that for the next hearing. We do have executive session for the purposes of strategy and collective bargaining and/or litigation. So, do we, Dr. Crowley?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Is it litigation involving a teacher?
No. Are we, are we touching upon CBA issues?
Yes.
Okay, so, Miss Chisholm, you can stay for the, the litigation aspect and then.
Okay.
So we are now.
Make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of state and.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that motion? We need a roll call vote on that, please.
Miss Chisholm?
Yeah.
Miss Cormier?
Yes.
Miss Kissel?
Yes. All right.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Malrennen?
Yes, in favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes. So at this time, everybody that's not a school committee member, a member of the administration or Ms. McLeod, please exit the meeting so we can have the confidentiality for the purposes of strategy and collective bargaining and/or strategy and litigation.